Basically completely engulfed in flames. He calls and the fire's dispatch, they responded within a matter of minutes. And they immediately declared a defensive fire, meaning that they couldn't go in. You know, they couldn't do any lifesaving measures. You can tell that the house was just too consumed in flames, but they were concerned about making sure it didn't spread. They fought it for hours until daylight breaks. At this point in time, if they're trying to identify whether there was anybody in the home. A family friend arrives on scene. They identified as Laterno residence. They said three people live there, John, his wife, Chris and daughter Alexa. But they were pretty sure that Chris was out of town visiting Alexa at college. And they were concerned that John might have been home alone at this time. So Detective Meadows from the sheriff's office goes out there. They do a preliminary, you know, just kind of evaluation, search of the scene. But obviously it's still smoldering and there's, you know, there's some safety issues with getting in there. The state fire marshal's office also responded as well. Within a few hours, they discover a body that was there and they discover some peculiar slash alarming things at the scene as well. Number one was the body that was discovered in the home. They noticed that a red Jetta was crashed in an detached garage. You can see a picture of that where it's kind of, you know, crushed up against the side of a pole there. There appears to have been a fire that was set inside the Jetta itself. And then they noticed this gold ring on the floor next to the Jetta. So, but they, you know, they basically shipped the body out. The coroner's office transfers that to the Morgan Lincoln County, where they're going to do an evaluation of that as would be customary in a case like this. So the next day Detective Meadows receives a call from Ed Brining, who's with the coroner's office or was at that time. And at this point in time, the case kind of takes us there. Because they did an x-ray of the body and they see that there's a gunshot wound. They see, you know, the gunshot material in the body itself. It's suggestive, obviously of a homicide. They're not 100% sure, but they're concerned about that at this point in time. Detective Meadows gets a search warrant for the property and the surrounding buildings. At this point in time, he calls in Ohio BCI and the state fire marshal's office comes back out as well. They go back out there, search the property and also Chris and Alexa Laterno arrived home from her college. And they speak and they basically said the last time they spoke with John was Thursday, a couple of days before this fire on early Sunday morning. Yes, sir.
Can you back up one second?
Sure.
This wasn't an area of law that I practiced in, but I'm a little surprised that with that going on, on the property that a search warrant was necessary. I would think that with a fire and a body that go in and have a look around without the necessity for a search warrant.
Sure. Sure. I mean, I think number one is a precautionary measure. It's a very small step to take. Number two, frankly, you don't know who, if you think there's foul play afoot, you don't know who might be your suspect. You know, often it could be a friend, a family. That certainly wasn't the case here. But when you don't know who your suspect is, you don't know what challenges you might have, you know, to any evidence they might uncover. So it was, at that point in time, they felt like the scene was secure and they were able to keep it secure. So they thought, and with our consultation, we thought it was best to go and get a search warrant to make sure that there would be no issues. There was really no exigency at that moment being the day after the fire. The fire's out, so we wouldn't want to challenge that they, you know, busted through a door of an outbuilding. And then it turns out, you know, maybe there's a suspect that's involved with the family that says, hey, you shouldn't have been in there. So it's just kind of a cautionary step and probably a good one at that point in time. Yeah, sure. So proof of life and cause of death. So at this point in time, they're trying to put together a timeline of John Laterno's last hours here on with us. So they pull his credit card history, looked at some phone records as well. They discovered that he made a purchase at a Kroger in Hebron and they find this surveillance video of him leaving Kroger. This was about eight o'clock AM the day before. So four o'clock AM, Sunday is the fire. This would have been by eight o'clock AM on Saturday, the day prior. At this point in time, too, there's an autopsy of the body. They do positively identify the body as John Laterno. They do that through the comparison of dental records to his records with his dentist. They finished the autopsy, or at least the preliminary autopsy, those preliminary results released. And they find out that the cause of death was a gunshot, but another important turn, if you find out that he was shot twice. Twice in the head, not just once. So any prospect that this would have been a suicide or anything like that is now off the table. It's definitively a homicide because obviously John Laterno wouldn't have shot himself twice in the head and then set his house on fire. So now the detectives begin to look for a suspect. They look at instant reports for the same date. They find out and they kind of make a connection to April 6th. So this is again 24, 36 hours or 24 to 48 hours before this fire. Deputies have been dispatched to 13110 Tollgate Road. And that's just around the country block, maybe separated by a quarter to a half a mile from the Laterno residence. The Laterno residence is basically right at the, close to the intersection of Tollgate Road and 204 there. So this report comes in, basically you have a young man that's kind of living at a family property. It's like a grandparent or a parent's house. It's a family farm that doesn't really operate as a farm, but it's a house with several outbuildings. And he's there playing video games. He's 23 with a couple of his friends. And this guy just walks up out of his basement stairs, literally. This guy just walks out of his basement stairs. And he sits down, says his name is Ray. And this kid, this guy's about 19, 20 years old. And he says, do you recognize me? And they say, no. And he's like, oh, I've been living here for a couple of weeks. And he says that, you know, he's been showering here and stuff like that. And he's kind of paranoid and giving these guys bad vibes in addition to being a complete stranger that just walked out of the basement stairs. So they called, they called the sheriff's office. They show up and the minute they walk to the door, Ray takes off down into the basement. They actually gave chase and they weren't able to locate him. They don't know if he slipped out of a window. There was actually an exterior door that led outside from the basement as well. But anyway, they couldn't find it, but they do see items missing. They see showers been used, hair clippings on the, on the, on the bathroom area. And the residents say that none of that stuff was us, none of that's ours. They come back, they're called back the next day because the father, Charles Brady's father Gregory, also, you know, part of the family farm there was out. Probably just checking on things. He checked on the camper. He heard some movement inside, he shook it and the same guy jumps out of the camper and takes off. And at this point in time, they also have done some Facebook research and they, they kind of connect this guy. I think his name is Ray Quan Hancock. So they share that with the deputies as well. But again, they weren't able to take the suspect into custody. The deputies were called, but by the time they get there, he's gone. So also the detectives learned through Facebook post that Hancock was seen in Edda shortly after the fire that later that day. And they, they discover some burnt personal property behind the Cajun Cafe off of US 40. And these are papers, as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, that has John Laterno's name on it. And they also find some property you can see in the bottom right-hand corner that was identified as belonging to John Laterno or John Laterno's family. And then they're able to get a surveillance, that top right is a surveillance photo from a Ring camera type thing at the Cajun Cafe Plaza right there. And they talked to the restaurant owner. He says, yeah, I was in here prepping food on Sunday morning. And this guy comes in looking for some food. He says, I'm not open today. You have to move along, which, which Ray does. So April 15th, about a week later Hancock is arrested. And at this point in time, he's arrested. Our office has issued a warrant on a complaint for the burglar on that Tollgate Road arrest or Tollgate Road incident. Reynoldsburg PD picks him up and at the time of his arrest, he has the, this property on him, which again is identified as belonging to John Laterno. There's a ring, some jewelry. And there's also these two keys that you can see in the bottom right-hand corner. And detectives actually took that over and tried to see if those matched the Laterno residence and they did not, which they found a little peculiar. But you'll see where that comes in a little bit later. So he's transported down to the, to the Fairfield County Jail. He's interviewed actually on three or four occasions. And basically he, he kind of gives versions of truth and fiction in each one of them, but he gets closer to truth with each one. And he says that he's been living, he'd been living in a camper in the basement of the Tollgate property for several weeks. He had come upon an old shotgun in his bedroom. He described the shotgun, including it was an, it was an old kind of, not even sure if it was a working gun, based upon subsequent talks with the property owners. But it had some black electrical tape on the stock. And, and he said that he had walked across the field to the Laterno residence. We actually, the detectives actually obtained some surveillance footage from a church that was right nearby that shows Ray Quan walking in the direction of the Laterno house with that shotgun in his hand. I, I didn't get an image to put on the PowerPoint, but that did exist. So basically he sits there, he lays in wait, he watches John Laterno through a window of the, of the residence as night falls. The lights go off, the TV goes off and Ray Quan enters the house. He goes upstairs with the shotgun. He shoots John in the bed. He shoots him, he actually unloads the gun, loads another round in the gun, loads another round in, shoots him again. And then it puts accelerant on the bed and then lights it, lights the bed on fire with John in it and the house goes up in flames. He had tried to flee in that red car, but he couldn't drive a stick. And so that's where he got it stuck there in the garage. So kind of a, a little bit of a side note, but it was important evidence in the case. During his interview Hancock described after he went to the Cajun Cafe, having gone to a home on Azalea Drive in Reynoldsburg. And he said that he'd been living in a basement there. And so they, long story short, is they Detective Meadows and a few others connected it to where this basement was. They, you know, he had identified it and these condos had walkout basements. And there was like a creek behind him there in Reynoldsburg. And, and they show up and they knock on this guy's door. It's actually an older gentleman and then his elderly mother. The elderly mother lived upstairs and the son lived downstairs in the finished part of this home, this condo. And they, they basically tell him why they're there. They're investigating this murder crime and they ask if they can come in and take a look around, and they do. And this guy had no idea that Ray Quan had been living in his basement. This guy had been sleeping there and living in the home his mother had. And Ray Quan, who had just done what he had done to John Laterno, was living in the basement. They found John Laterno's sweatshirt next to a washer in this guy's basement. And those two keys they found on Ray Quan Hancock, they put him in the back door and they worked. They went to that home. So Ray Quan, what he had done is found an open door and the keys were kind of hanging right inside the door. And he had helped himself to those keys and was letting himself in and out of that home for about a week until he was arrested. So the indictment and trial, so we indicted him, the prosecutor's office in May of 2018 for aggravated murder and other charges. Basically there were motions during a period of 18 roughly months of litigation. They challenged his competency to stand trial insanity. He underwent psychological evaluations. The court found him competent and the defense initially filed a not guilty by reason of insanity defense, but they didn't argue that at trial. The case was a jury trial. He refused to plead guilty. It was a six-day trial, 23 witnesses. We had lay witnesses, the 911 caller, the Tollgate property owner, the Cajun Cafe restaurant owner. The gentleman that lived at Azalea Drive, where they found that sweatshirt and the keys belonging to John, or the sweatshirt belonging to John. And there was an interesting lay witness that we had to call and they never did find the murder weapon in this case. Ray Quan had given some locations and deputies and detectives were scouring the area to try and find this weapon. They never did find the shotgun, but we brought in a cousin, a Grady cousin, that came in and testified that he knew that that shotgun was present on that Tollgate Road property and was able to identify it. He kind of grew up shooting it. He's told us, basically matched up where it would have been located in the house to where Hancock had said it was located. Another witness is firefighters, law enforcement, investigative experts from BCI and the state fire marshal office. Dr. Jeff Lee was our forensic pathologist to do the autopsy here. We had fingerprint experts, DNA experts and someone from the fire lab to talk about some property they collected having accelerant on it with respect to the fire. And then the victim's daughter also testified about identifying the property that they found at these various locations. So the jury turned a guilty verdict on all counts. So just a couple of quick closing remarks, you know, this was a well-investigated, well-done case. Certainly the confession kind of made it a dead bang winner, no pun intended, but for the prosecution. But there were, obviously it's still the type of case you can't, you can't take lightly. We met with all the witnesses prior to trial. The prosecutor, Brian Holt, myself tried the case, but we visited all the scenes, went out to the fire department. We met with the victims throughout the 18 months of case with vetting. And then we had jury selection and also sentencing and appeals that followed that. So a lot went into this case, both investigatively and for the prosecutor's office. But it was, it was a terrible circumstance. Laterno, Chris, the wife and Alexa, the daughter are really nice people. I haven't really talked to them much since this case was prosecuted, but they did an excellent job. Alexa and her testimony, and they were very supportive and they were just good and decent piece of people. And it's terrible that this, this befell their family. But I just thought it'd be an interesting kind of review of what, you know, how the, the system works. I ran through a lot, but I'm happy to answer any questions about an interesting case that we prosecuted. So if anybody has anything.
Well, you know, I, I remember distinctly when all this happened. And driving by the house, burned out shell of the house, there wasn't much left of it. And my daughter, who was very good friends with the mother.
Is that right? I didn't know that.
And they, I believe they were in Indiana at the time.
Yeah, especially with the college. Yeah.
And that was part of the reason they weren't home at all. But it's, this is a case where justice was absolutely served.
Yeah.
And I appreciate everything that Fairfield County and other agencies did to resolve this. Because that, that would have been terribly had that not been solved.
Yeah, it was a lot of, it was a lot of collaboration. It was a lot of moving parts came together in the right ways to see a good result. But yeah, so anyway, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank God.
Yes. Yep.
So the question sets aside this time for residents and taxpayers to make any comments. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium and give your name and address. And we are limiting to three minutes, please.
Morning. Stephanie Taylor, Habtchaper Humanities Southeast Ohio. We had a really awesome event this weekend. We nailed it at the Workforce Center, Fairfield County's Workforce Center. If you've never been there, check it out. Please do so. It's an amazing space and we really appreciate having that space here. And I say that all the time, but it really, really makes my job a lot easier and a lot of the things that we do. We had a ton of fun. There was a lot of people in this room that were part of that, including Prosecutor Witt and his family, who won fastest family for Fairfield County. So awesome, his three boys, Noah was a rock star. I mean, he did an amazing job. I was like, I'm going to have to like recruit him into Habitat when we can. So we had a great event and we're looking forward to doing it again next year at the Workforce Center. And hopefully it will be a much bigger event and more people can be involved. And so again, thank you to all the resources and things that we have here in Fairfield County to allow us to continue doing what we can and just being successful in this county. Oh, yeah. So I didn't want to steal all my thunder, but Fairfield County's facility team, which is John Coates and his team, Tanny, Brad and Josh, were all four team that they were fastest in Fairfield County overall. So they did win the Golden Hammer and does say fastest in Fairfield County. And so they represented very well. I thought it was very fitting. We called them the FC facilitators and gave them a fun little name. I've got some great pictures of John. John even went head-to-head with Norm, if anybody knows Norm Trembling. He was our somewhat star of the show to a degree. He, it was an opportunity to go head-to-head with him. And Norm is very fast and very quick. I think the prosecutor put him up to that. So it was interesting. It's, I've been head-to-head and it's scary, I'm not gonna lie.
Did he get beat at all?
No, nobody beat him. And there was opportunities to buy extra nails against Norm. And so you could, everybody's, each person started with six. So John had to put six in and so did Norm, but you could pay to put more nails on Norm's plate. So I think at the time.
Where you go, my ego went straight up.
Yeah, so I think at one point his wife, so Norm's wife, that put up more nails against him than anybody in the room. And at one point when he went up against somebody, he had 20 that he had to put in faster than six and he still crushed it. So yeah, it was, it was kind of fun. But I already knew that was, I mean, that's why I brought him in, right? So, but we hope everybody next year is able to come and enjoy that. And we have plenty of other things that'll be happening. Sixth Avenue is still rolling and we'll be starting Grass Street at the end of the summer, beginning of fall. So I'll have that. Thank you.
I'm very fast with nails.
Yeah.
One of those guns.
Nail guns, right? See, you and everybody else wanted to bring one. I said, no guns at the show, so only these guns, right? Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'd like to be next. So today we have with us Vince. And you're going to talk about the Fairfield County Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Yes, thank you very much. And I'm very pleased to be here. I think a number of the county staff are pleased to be able to reach this point in the process and the commissioners, their support. We do have a draft, final draft comprehensive plan, which has been underway for a good year now. And what I'm going to do is present kind of a highlight and open up by talking a little bit about why the comprehensive plan and so much changes that occurred in the process, which are reflected in where we are today in terms of the draft document. And so what is comprehensive planning? It's very much a tool for local governments in Ohio to manage growth. It's a policy document meant to summarize growth priorities, development priorities for our community and can be used by units of local government, for instance, the townships and the villages. So they make their individual development decisions. It very much builds upon general consensus among all the participants. We had a stakeholder committee representing a number of local jurisdictions, county staff, the public interacting with us throughout the process. And so we tried our best to capture general consensus as we completed the document. And again, it is a tool to make local decisions where, you know, at the ground level, development decisions are made in the individual townships, in the villages, cities. And particularly in the incorporated areas, it's meant to be a tool to assist townships and villages. And probably most importantly, it is not a replacement for local zone. Zoning helps to implement a plan, but a plan never replaces zoning. They are really very different, though they need to work together. I mean, that's the intent. And while I have an update today, the county blasted a plan, it's most recent, it was done in 2018. But like many counties in central Ohio, there has been unprecedented growth pressure as the metropolitan area continues to expand. And that creates pressure on communities. It also creates opportunities. So each community can kind of take advantage of that energy in the market, as you might say, to try to capture a part that best fits each individual community. And a plan helps with that. Housing continues to be a concern that the county commissioners, the county have been talking about that for a while. Because there's, and as, as we did housing analysis as part of the process, identified parts of the housing sector here in Fairfield County where there is need that's not being met by billable product. And for people who work in the county but have to commute obviously from other counties. And the residents who commute up to Franklin County for jobs, which gets to the next point about creating jobs here in Fairfield County to certain local residents. Another piece of that conversation as the plan was developed, and it sparked the plan or a request to the county commissioners from a number of townships who wanted this assistance to really look at this in a more updated way to help them deal with their own individual growth issues. And so other concerns that come into play, reducing taxpayer impacts when development comes, cost for infrastructure and things. And today more and more local communities in Ohio have tools in place that can help reduce the impact of those costs on local residents. Part of that also relates back to building tax base to generate future tax revenue. Because every place grows, infrastructure ages, it's always a public cost regardless of what you're doing. And grow that tax base as you like. And kind of an underlying point through all of this has been protecting environment and open space. And that became more, more and more of an emphasis as we're working with the process publicly and in the plan itself. These are just some quick facts that kind of identify some aspects of the county. You'll note at the top, 214,900, that's one current forecast for Fairfield's population growth over the next couple of decades. Those numbers are updated by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission every year or two. And they will continue to grow just as the region continues to grow. If you, you know, paid attention to the news at all, you, you know, we all know that central Ohio, I mean, most of Ohio is growing. Folks from around Ohio are coming to central Ohio. So it's impacting not just Franklin County, which includes Fairfield and all the other counties that surround Franklin. And then you have things like Gantel and other economic development projects that are of such a scale, they further impact every county, frankly, in central Ohio. Zoning, for the most part, the townships in particular are zone agricultural, but they all, all those districts, those zoning districts permit residential. So while we say the bulk of the county is zone agricultural, that's a mean, but the sort of zone low density single family characteristic, which kind of speaks to what are the implications long-term for growth pressure in the county when a low-density pattern. Prior to, I'll turn it off in a second. Prior to a series of meetings in November, in December, we had well over 550 people participate in our process. So that's reflects the degree to which the public took an interest in the comprehensive plan update, which is really important. One other thing to note at the top, and this relates back to, I don't know if it's back to where we landed, but the plan is that roughly half the population of, well, 10% of the population of Fairfield County lived in the villages. But of the remainder, 90%, happened in the cities, three cities, the other half were in all the townships. And so that gives you a sense about the, the distribution of people here in the county. But what's more important is that, while that's an important input, the densities are different because obviously the cities and the villages are denser than the townships. But what thinking ahead, plan actually breaks that to a plan where it really tries to address and direct more people to move into the cities and villages and not into the townships. So again, trying to protect farm. This is some rise of the process that we had beginning in mid-2022, continuing all the way through to where we are today. A couple of big public meetings, one with the Regional Planning Commission, which I'll talk about in a second. And the meeting that we had to kick off the process. And the village and township meetings that occurred in principally November and December. So as a starting point, we looked at a lot of the current characteristics here in the county, whether it's foot lanes and slope, protected farm, land in particular, oil and gas facility distributions, which are all over the county, as you all know. Existing land use pattern, existing zoning, most of the county is zoned except for two townships. And what that kind of represents from potential as policy plus regulation. And then we did an assessment, tried to determine what could be developable, whether that actually develops in a set of questions. But looking at land that doesn't have any buildings on it, whether it's a barn or a house, what's out there, what's 10 acres or larger? And it's an interesting pattern, which makes, you know, the priority of trying to manage to look that much more difficult because we have a dispersed development. Only, I've got an exact percentage, but you know, obviously part of the city, part of the county is, exists in the cities and the villages of development. But there's a great deal of single-family homes spread throughout the county in the townships. And it's a very dispersed pattern. And so think about farming protection makes it that much more of a challenge to try to figure out, how do you protect agriculture in open space while having a very dispersed pattern of homes throughout the bulk of the county, not all of it? So our first public meeting, which was held back in 2022 at the Workforce Development Center, we had a really good turnout. And of the different things that we asked people there, one was, which was very important to the whole process, was tell us on maps in small groups where you think in the future, single families should be located, commercial should be located, employment in businesses, employers. And also tell us where farm in an open space should be preserved. That was really important, but kind of how the plan evolved over. And what became a growth concept map that we worked with, with the steering committee, again, which represented, had about 30 members representing a cross-section of jurisdictions and other interest groups to help us take the public input and turn it into more refined maps. Part of that process, we also, instead of using very, very generic land use categories, which a lot of plans do, I'll just say, single-family, retail, industrial. We actually broke it into character types, which are far more descriptive and do a better job capturing what is intended by that. It can help people understand through narrative, uses that might happen, pictures, what is intent. So we worked with them to try to refine that. Actually ended up growing a little bit to later stages of the plan. So this map ended up being, was refined a bit further into a future land use map with a draft document. And that went to the, that was posted out there. And we scheduled a public hearing with the RPC. And we scheduled a public hearing with the RPC, which generated a very good turnout opposed to who were frustrated with what their perception about what the plan was intending long term. There was a lot of concern about growth and farmland preservation. And the plan wasn't really promoting that per se in terms of trying to change the county, but the folks in attendance, some of you may have been in the audience, really expressed a lot of concern to us that growth is important to consider and to try to figure out and balance, and farmland preservation and open space were very important priorities. So at the direction of Commissioner Fix, we all took a step back. And then in November and December of this year, met with every township, every village, the school superintendents and the farm bureau. County staff were there, our team was there for the most part. And we sat and this example from Liberty, at the map, Commissioner Fix opened with comments, and we talked about the map and what it was recommending to get their feedback. It was really critical to evolving the plan to where it sits today, because that input was very helpful in terms of kind of refining the direction. Making sure we, as a, at the county level, were reflecting the priorities of individual jurisdictions, building upon the public input. So what's changed since the RPC public hearing? The plan kind of reinforces its focus on growing inward in existing cities and villages. Encouraging new growth in another location, but in a limited number based on the road net or ability of the county to provide utility services. More other kind of growth, growths were already happening. We have earned and strengthened promoting farmland preservation, open space conservation, and really trying to further limit the impact of new growth on current. So with the cities, which you get at Pickerton, Lancaster, and Canal, the plan really kind of reinforced the direction that I already taken, which is to to continue to infill on the local sites, grow where you already have your infrastructure in place, and then expand in logical ways based on the availability of utilities. The village is really the same kind of an approach, grow inward, make sure your infill sites are filled up, and where your utility systems can support additional growth, do that, support that around the villages to again, limit the impact of farm. And attracting more housing in every village, we strengthen the local, that local market, locally owned small businesses. That's an important economic business. It's not the same scale as, you know, a Google data center, but every village has a heart of commercial local businesses and maintaining that and strengthening it, growing it, is a real important economic and a social strategy for each place. So we created the character types I mentioned earlier. We created this new one, village growth areas, to try to reflect that concept of the villages should should support expansion of villages in logical ways with, this can be their capacity or any utility capacity, and stay within the character of the village, so they logically grow. I mean, they're all historic places. They'll have a really great walkable character, and that can be further, that could be expanded a bit in each place and shrink in each village. The other concept that grew a little bit and more, some were mixed-use centers, the prior plan had two noted. These are locations, one is under development, my land ground is broken up, it should be built totally soon in Violet Township. That's a local project, mixed-use. These are places where you mix residential, commercial, employment, open space, you might have public facilities, you might have a school, for instance. They're quite popular. They've been popular as a development concept around the country for a while. They've been growing. There are a number of them in central Ohio. The point being that if you try to take a small area, have a little bit more density, and provide, in a sense, everything someone might need and might want to choose to live there, including working, literally walking to work. And that can happen in these locations. So we added, we added to, I'll show this in a minute. What's also important about these, this sort of a development approach, is that it can help the market meet the need in the county without eating up a lot of farm, because again, you're trying to concentrate in a sense of suburban type development in a very small area. These are all based upon access to the highway system, growth trends, utilities. So logical places, but not very On the map that, this map on the left, back in August, was a map that was considered at the RPC meeting. And that on the right is the one that evolved with that input and the twenty-six meetings. Some of the key differences, the amount of development, this blue color represents employment, which can be, you know, logistics, warehousing, data centers, advancement manufacturing, what have you. That amount of development shrank. In some cases, it grew a tiny bit down here around Kicking Greenfield Township in northwest of Lancaster. But for most part, shrank, and in two cases, became mixed-use centers and smaller apartments. Truly issues and emphasize the idea of mixing development patterns. A lot of the single family residential that was in particularly this area has disappeared. Two go in Greenfield, but also parts Liberty and parts of Walnut. Pleasant Township, and originally this had actually been drafted, disappeared as well. But Pleasant Township traditionally thought this was a logical place for some single family residential over time, so that that was put back in the map. And then the other thing that's real important on these growth, it's that light purple color represents this policy concept of let's try to grow our villages where it makes sense, where we have utilities. Et cetera. The bottom of the map didn't change. I mean, all of this that's in the background, this is all basically rural. The colors differentiate relative to density, where blue is a more denser township, it has more single family homes. Down here, this is more southeastern part of the county, it's far more natural. You've got all your hills, your property and heavy woodlands represented there, and then agriculture, really, as we all know, the northern part of the county very strong from a cultural standpoint, getting its fairly level topography and active farm head. That's just an enlargement of that map. So this is the map that's before us today, in terms of the draft. And the other thing, just to touch on briefly, the priority growth areas. These were identified with the assumption that within the next five to ten years, these could be places where we may see some real interest in from a development standpoint. And that's because they're located, oops. That's because they're located here, I seventy, the northern part of the county. And as you've been, if you've been following what's been going on in Licking County, the township is reaching the point where particularly logistics are moving further east out towards forty. And Harrison Township, a couple of the townships to the east are positioning themselves to attract some of that development. They're setting up joint economic development districts and doing some other things, like there's because the market is saying, we still want logistics in this corridor because of I seventy and things perhaps such as Intel, but each township wants to build a bit of a tax base, and so they're trying to take advantage of that. So that's reflected in a short second in terms of Liberty and Walnut. These are also all locations where public utilities could be provided by the county. So in the old map, we had nine of these priority growth areas in the county. And we reduced the number to seven, and we shrunk them in size. So they are smaller, their impact is less. We added the two, we actually added three mixed-use, Liberty Township, Walnut Township. And then along thirty-three, this kind of splits Violet and a bit of Little Nettie. In each case, there are locations that really could benefit because of their location criteria, their characteristics, and could really minimize the development footprint in the county and benefit those townships from a tax base. That's just an enlargement of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just want to make a comment. I've been in some form of public office for twenty-nine years now and have seen a fairly large number of controversies over that time. Some of them, I remember the dog days of summer. Back in, I think it was two thousand eleven or twelve, and certainly the significant controversy around locating our current jail system and many others. What I've never seen before in that twenty-nine years is something start off so controversial as this and not end necessarily with one side winning and one side losing. That's been my experience with major controversies. To see the work that Commissioner Fix and staff and you all put in to recalibrating the plan consistent with what a number of people were concerned about. It's just a Herculean effort at solving what at the time seemed like a major controversy in a way that I have never seen before in my time. And I just wanted to thank you all for your participation in that, and particularly to Commissioner Fix, who I know has been you know, the subject of some criticism throughout this process. And I just wanted to thank him for the very, very heavy lifting to put this on a sustainable path.
Commissioner Fix.
Yeah, I appreciate those kind words. Sorry for the background noise. There's really no place you can go in Las Vegas. It doesn't have music playing, but I appreciate the kind words of Commissioner Davis. You know, it was a great team effort. Vince and his team, our staff, you know, I've talked over the months of all the people who came out to all the meetings, and really the townships and villages, right, who opened up their meetings to us and gave us great feedback and helped us figure out how to do this in a way that everybody could be happy with. And the good news is, you know, we're now having meetings with those townships and villages and bringing people together and feels like we've got a great deal of momentum in how to do this the right way. Really, at the end of the day, in an effort to preserve the land and protect the taxpayers. So thanks to Vince and his team, and thanks to all of our team who helped in that process. And I'm excited to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jeremiah, any comments, please?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, and I've said this a couple of times, but the leadership, the Commissioner Fix showed through this process, is the reason it just worked out successfully. And I just want to thank him myself for putting the time into that and taking the time to get out there and put his boots on the ground instead of just pointing fingers and expecting something to be done. It does a tremendous amount of his his care for this community and, you know, for his care for wanting to do the right thing. So thank you, Jeff.
Do you have anything to add?
This is the first step how the real work begins. You gotta get prepared for everything, so. As Jeff has said, there's any meetings that we're having going forward and.
I want to thank Holly and Jennifer and all the regional planning team. They were an integral part of this, and it really was a team and a collaborative effort, and Vince and his team as well. You know, we stepped back and made adjustments, and that took time, effort, and energy, but I think, as Commissioner Davis pointed out, it was well worth it. And was, you know, part of that process unfolding. And when you have folks engaging in the process, I think you have a much better end product. So thanks to everybody that played a role in that.
Holly, anything to add?
Just want to thank everyone as well. As Vince pointed out, we're in unprecedented territory. We're feeling pressures everywhere. And I think that Fairfield County serves as a model for how to bring everyone together to the same page. So I really appreciate all the efforts that everyone is, so to speak.
Jennifer, anything to add?
I just, I think that everyone works well together as a team, and I do appreciate all the support that we've gotten from commissioners and all the county employees during this process. Thank you, Jeff, for the guidance and for leading this process. And it's been very, very
Right. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment or have a question for Vince? Please?
No, I went to quite a few meetings, as you know. From day one until now, it's like a total turnaround. And I've been to several township meetings, village meetings, and that type of thing. And I think even some of the ones that were not in favor of it because of the cooperation now between the villages and the townships or the county, and everybody's working together where they see where maybe not, like Jeff says, not, maybe not everybody is going to get everything they want, but everybody is going to get a piece of like the taxes and that type of thing. So with everybody working together, it's, I mean, I think it's the villages and the different townships are starting to see that that's that's going to happen.
Anyone else? So I'll say this, you know, at the end of the day, we're here to serve. We're here to operate in any, any fashion that we're able to. And to make Fairfield County a much better place for each of us to live. That's our goal. And so thank you all for everybody who participated, especially Commissioner Fix. You know, he took a lot of heat, but at the end of the day, we're on this side of Vince, a much better place. And everybody that was involved made all those meetings and listened to all the comments and so on and so forth. Thank you all. Very good. Moving on to Lingle, anything, you have things to say?
All right, we can review here. As Stephanie Taylor from Habitat shared, they did have their, we nailed it fundraiser. And one little piece that she didn't point out, is that they raised over five thousand dollars for that event. So there's some pictures there. The commissioners and deputy county administrator and myself did personally sponsor the team because that was part of the fundraising component. So thanks to the commissioners and Jeff for helping the team with that. There's John. Is that what you're having here?
I mean, I went online and just, it was against the Lancaster Police Department, so I thought I'd rub it in a little bit.
And is that Tammy in the background?
Tammy, yeah, Tammy was our lead. Well, really cool event, and, you know, all kinds of silent auction, and there was a coffee truck, just pretty interesting. The workforce staff are helping them get set up. I didn't have to do much, but just enjoyed it.
Okay, we do have a great team out there at the Workforce Center that does help with lots of these events, especially surrounding Habitat. They have a number of their things there. So I was happy Stephanie was able to come in on that, but hats off to them for that. That was a great fundraiser, five thousand dollars. Another note here is that we did receive the technical assistance report relating to proposed development of solar farms in Fairfield County. We had contracted with Bennett and Williams last year to provide information and get to the type of solar panels for solar projects, types of potential contaminants and potential leakage of contaminants of concern, and hydrogeologic settings and potential movements of those contaminants. We did receive that report, which also includes a PowerPoint and executive summary, and all of those documents are in the review packet for your review.
Please. I can just touch on that. I look forward to reading the report. I understand it's very lengthy and somewhat exhaustive in contracting with Bennett and Williams on this environmental concern. I just don't want people to think that that it's the only concern that we're trying to get information on. This particular report deals with the concept of forever chemicals and the likelihood of those chemicals being released traveling through the soils, perhaps contaminating aquifers or other forms of groundwater. And we got technical assistance from somebody on that, because that was something that, that we collectively did not understand the science of that concern. Other types of concerns we feel like we can better understand. People like the aesthetics, or they don't, mostly not, of solar farms, we can understand that. Property values may go up or down, probably down. Um, property values may go up or down, probably down, and we understand that um as it relates to um drainage tile and farm systems. Um, personally, I'm pretty familiar with that situation, given my decades as a pipeline lawyer representing landowners who were being impacted by pipeline projects and all the complications associated with drainage tiles, major construction projects like that. So I just want to be clear, saying that that the there probably will be some focus on this particular report. But I wouldn't want folks to think that um we're not aware of the multitude of other concerns, not all of which I've listed. I'm not trying to be exhaustive in listing the concerns that have been expressed. But um this uh report will just be a piece of the larger puzzle um as we move forward um in this process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Fix, will you have any comments regarding that?
No, I'm I'm uh like Commissioner Davis, looking forward to reading the report and uh just, you know, recognize that this is only one of a number of concerns, but uh, you know, a number of folks had um expressed their concerns that, you know, we were putting chemicals in the ground that would harm their families. And uh I'm glad that we have some type of definitive answer to that question. I haven't read it yet, but uh look forward to reading that and we can talk about it more next week.
Thank you. I've uh I've done some preliminary reading, looking at the executive summary and what have you, but uh look forward to reading this report and see what the, see what the results are.
And that's in your review packet. It would also be contained in the the minutes of this meeting as well, which will be published next week. Uh, let's see here. Um, we do have uh the administrative approvals in the review packet. There are ten resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. Couple of note there. Um, we did already talk about the resolutions approved, the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan. Um, and thank you to to Vince for the presentation today. This is a resolution that can be adopted. Uh, you can adopt the plan in totality or reject it in totality. So that is on the agenda today. We also, if anyone's having deja vu, we do have back on the new community authority uh for Violet Township. Last week, you did vote uh to rescind a previous establishment of this and the board appointments associated with it, the attorneys for Rockford Homes and Homes had asked that we um allow them to resubmit that for um the establishment of the NCA based upon concerns they had relating to filing and hearing dates. So this is for the resubmission of the same petition. It just has new filing date. So that is on for today. Then we also have three resolutions from the Engineers Office for some advertising for some projects that they have. Jeremiah, you want to add anything to that one?
I'd just start the crack ceiling project where we uh we go back. These included the roads, blow out the cracks and put hot tar in them to keep the water from getting in there. And, you know, purchasing the liquid asphalt, we use that with our chip seal program. Scrap metal, we can get somebody to buy it. We like to get rid of it. And then subdivision inspections, that's that's a yearly thing that we do on all the subdivisions that have drainage maintenance districts. So it's just appropriating that.
All right. Thank you very much. I've heard I don't believe you have a budget review today, do you? All right, Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. On March twentieth, we have a meeting with Senator Schaper at eleven A M. And the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disability Celebration of Possibilities at five thirty P M. On March twenty first, the Family and Children First Council meeting is at eight thirty A M. A meeting with State Auditor Keith Faber at nine thirty A M. An L F C A A Board of Directors meeting at eleven thirty A M. Commissioners, we also have a meeting regarding regulating fill in the North Walnut Township floodplain at nine A M on March twenty fifth. The Commissioners received invitations for the Child Abuse Prevention Month Breakfast on April tenth at eight A M. The Fairfield County Four H Achievement Twenty Twenty Four Award Program on April eleventh at seven P M. The Canal Winchester State of the Schools and Networking Luncheon on April seventeenth at eleven thirty A M. And the celebration of thirty five years of the Fairfield County Foundation on April seventeenth at five P M at the Yale House. The following correspondence was received, a news release uh from the Office of the County Auditor on March twelfth titled Auditor's Office Releases Credit Card Skimmers Public Service Announcement Video. Correspondence Regarding Industrial Solar Projects, a memorandum from the Office of the Public Ohio Public, from the Ohio Public Defender, March thirteenth, Regarding Indigent Defense Re- Reimbursement for Capital Cases. The Fairfield County Municipal Court sent the Criminal Traffic Division Fees Collective Report for February. A news release from the Office of the County Auditor on March fourteenth titled Auditor Highlights Popular Annual Financial Report, Concise Snapshot of Fairfield County Governmental Finances. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette ran an article from Jeff Barron titled Fairfield County Commissioners Plan Vote on Land Use Plan on Tuesday. A member from the County Auditor dated March fourteen, subjects audit questionnaires regarding fraud, Board of Revision Update, and the Ohio Women's Prison Entrepreneurship Program. The Fairfield County Auditor's Office Winds of the Week were provided on March fourteenth, a letter from Walnut Township, the Fairfield County Vision Bureau on March sixth regarding short-term rentals, a report from Linda Aller that um Ani previously spoke about, an executive summary also from Linda Aller. A present, the presentation slides are also in the packet, and that is it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fix, any new business you'd love to talk about?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. As folks are have heard over the last few weeks, have been a member of the uh state task force on indigent defense. Um, we're certainly looking at that uh primarily from a budgetary standpoint, but also from the standpoint of the um constitutional right that people have to that service. Um, I believe that the work of the Indigent Defense Task Force is concluding. Um, I've been working this morning on some final correspondence to uh include as a supplement to the final report, which I understand will be written by the Chair and the Co-Chair. Um, apparently without deliberations from the task force. I, I think that although that task force work is concluding um the work going forward with the legislature to come up with a solution that might be workable over a longer, longer horizon, um that will certainly be the hard part. In that process, I was was confirmed for me what I already knew is that there are rural counties who cannot attract attorneys to represent their indigent defendants. Um, and they probably need state help. Um, and there are counties like Fairfield whose system and costs of our system uh is significantly more efficient than perhaps any other in the state. Uh, but at least uh among the top five in terms of efficiency. So our goal in participating in that was to avoid a scenario that has been floated where the state rushes into the rural and troubled counties uh to help solve their uh problem and doing that on the backs financially of counties who are successful. And 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 that concept frustrates me a lot, and I see it a lot in terms of uh state solutions. Uh, they rush in to solve broken problems in other areas and penalize areas that are not relevant by not funding them or literally in this case, making a suggestion that our funding be reduced because we're doing so well that that money then be given to other areas that aren't doing well. And as part of my participation in the task force, I've tried to encourage them to rethink that entire upside-down concept. Um, perhaps incentivizing areas that are doing so well um as opposed to penalizing areas that are doing well so that they can find extra pockets of money from us uh to help broken systems. Uh, I just um I'm frustrated by that. Um, but in any event, look forward to the concluding report and then the work of convincing the legislature uh not to penalize counties who are very successful.
Well, Commissioner Davis, I really appreciate your work on this uh issue. I spoke to somebody that was in attendance at one of those committee meetings and he said you pretty much controlled the conversation. So I think that's uh pretty important to uh get our point across, and I think you did that very well. Commissioner Fix, any new business?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, under new business, um had an opportunity uh to visit for a little while again last night uh for, I don't know, the third or fourth time with uh Senator Matt Dolan, who is Chairman of Finance uh in the Ohio Senate. And a number of our conversations have uh involved um the work that the House of Representatives in the state did on allocating the capital budget, which included uh approximately fifteen million dollars uh for various projects in Fairfield County. Um, which I really supported that um House uh capital allocation and the treatment of Fairfield County in that allocation. Uh, if I might, Mr. President, if you've been paying attention for a long time to state politics and counties' relationship to state politics, what you might have noticed is that the three Cs control everything. Uh, Columbus, Cincinnati, Cleveland, they'll get what they want. Historically, green counties like Fairfield or even worse rural counties are left to 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 the scraps of what's left. So just a little something to perhaps make you feel like you were participating, even though you weren't. Um, the House's capital allocation is dramatically different than anything Fairfield County has ever seen before in this process, and that now hangs in the Senate. And that is why I've had some productive conversations with Matt Dolan in his capacity as Chairman of Finance in the Senate. Um, I'm hoping that between our own Senator, Senator Dolan and perhaps others, the um the way Fairfield County was treated in the House can be protected in the Senate. Um, I think that's going to be an incredibly difficult process, perhaps um in many ways affected by the results of today's election. Thank you, Mr. President.
And that's uh the reason Ani and I and others are, Rick, and are going to meet with Senator Schaper tomorrow. Be sure that Fairfield County is treated the way it should be. And I believe at the end of that meeting, that will be a case. Hope you would please you will uh please rise if you're able, if you're going to get a and please rise if you're able and join in what pledge I would I pledge against the life of the United States of America and to the Republican constituents of my nation, under God, in this home of liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, next week, so about a week and a half out, um the Fairfield County offices will be closed on March twenty ninth and at noon in observance of Good Friday.
Approval for March twelfth, two thousand twenty. So move second discussion. Being number of all, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Minutes past two zero. And the Commissioners Resolution twenty twenty four dash three dot nineteen dot A, a resolution authorizing the approval of the Fairfield County Twenty Twenty Four Comprehensive Plan.
Book Commissioners Resolutions A, B, and C.
Second discussion.
Mr. President, um I spoke to the land use plan and the 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 short history of um the development of that thing earlier. I won't repeat all that. Um, but sometimes thanks and appreciation, this doesn't seem like enough uh for what a number of our that people and Commissioner Fix and consultants, uh the the office that they went through. This really can be used uh in future um conferences and sessions, other local officials uh how to address uh concerns um that people raise and how to how to work through what at one point seemed like exceedingly controversial process.
Thank you. Although Commissioner Fix is unable to vote today, Commissioner Fix, any uh final comments?
Uh, no, I'm looking forward to the next step. I appreciate you guys uh hopefully voting in favor of this in my absence. Um, we've got a lot of work to do and a great process. I'm looking forward to to moving it forward. Thank you.
Mr. President, one more comment. Another thing I've learned today is when you hatch an extremely controversial plan, it's found you out for a vote. Go to Las Vegas.
Okay, that's one. That's good.
He's definitely in a safe distance. So uh any other uh final comments from uh Rick, please? You you weren't here earlier, so but
apologies, I was
I know you had something very important going on.
Yes, yes, yes. And and also just speaks to the importance of growth and bringing jobs to the community as we were servicing employer that fortunately they'll be losing jobs. So we're helping those employees and reassuring them that there will be plenty of jobs in Fairfield County for them. And something like this is critical for that because uh we do need land. We do need opportunities where it makes sense to be able to bring housing, to be able to bring um commercial industry in places for people to work, uh to better their lives. So um I just want to thank the the Commissioners for their time, energy and uh resources and funding for this very important project where, you know, a lot of counties might shy away from something like this. Um, the Commissioners stood out in front of it. And um I'm just saying that my economic development um peers around the region are um jealous about the support that our Commissioners have shown to this uh as it's been out there. So uh I want to just personally thank uh especially Commissioner Fix for for everything that they've done. Uh, and now now the real work begins.
Anyone else? You know, uh, this this cliche has been mentioned many times, but if you fail a plane, you plan to fail. And that is absolutely true. Growth is coming and we need to be prepared. So again, thank everyone who did all the heavy lifting. It wasn't me for all the work you did. Any additional discussion? Call please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero from the Fairfield County Engineer Resolution twenty twenty four dash three dot nineteen dot D. Resolution to approve advertising for the twenty twenty four Crack Seal Project.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero from the Fairfield County Job and Family Services Resolution twenty twenty four dash three dot nineteen dot H. Resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Number Twenty Fifteen, Child Support Enforcement Agency.
Move Job and Family Services Resolution H and I.
Second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Payment of Bills Resolution twenty twenty four dash three dot nineteen dot J. A resolution authorizing approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Second discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March twenty sixth at nine A M.
So we'll now go into So, we'll now go into executive session, you know, as Commissioner Davis to do that.
I have a motion to go into executive sessions as personnel outside. In that session, I would like to have the Commissioners, County Administrator, or Deputy County Administrator, or their chair, wait, representatives from the Prosecutor's Office, even outside counsel and clerks.
Okay, second back. Call please.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
I anticipate after we come out of executive session, not having any additional business before, before the Commissioners. But I'll ask this question, is there any other business before the Commissioners at this time? Okay, well, thank you.